It's 5:30 and we'll go ahead and get this meeting up and going. Welcome to the April 15th. I just realized if you look up there, it says it's the March 15th meeting. So I can blame myself, I'm the one that typed that, so that's 100% on me.
Lisa's not here.
Yeah, well, yeah, Lisa's not here today. So thanks, everybody, for coming and being here. I know April 15th is our favorite day of the year. It's the one day we can all rally as Americans, whether we don't like local government or state government, we can all have a unified feeling toward how much we love today. I finished mine Saturday and have been almost in tears ever since. We do appreciate you coming. I know that I'd also like to recognize our baseball team, Pickens High School Dragons baseball team did win region last week. They were able to clinch that, so they're now continuing on their victory tour with some non-conference games, which is why Lisa's not here, because she traveled with the team to go to Carrollton and Karen is filling in as our deputy. We did keep her fresh every now and then, but she's serving as our deputy coordinator and is up here keeping her minutes tonight. So with that, I'd like to get the meeting up and running. I'll lead us in the invocation and when I finish, Ms. Megan, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure.
Would you join me? God, we thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. We thank you that we live in a country where we can enjoy the freedoms that you've blessed us with. It only takes a minute to watch the news to realize how fortunate we are to live and experience all that we get to experience. God, we pray for our community. We ask you to keep your hand of protection over each and every man and woman in Pickens County, that you continue to help guide and protect and that you govern us, that you help all that we do here tonight be in honor of you and done in a way that you're proud. And we thank you for everything. Thank you for this weather. We thank you for your love. We thank you for letting us live in one of the greatest counties in the country, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for being here. I know that as we go for the approval of the agenda, do you have one amendment we had left off under Section A, approve executive session minutes for the March 18th meeting? Those are the only additions that I'm aware of. Do I have any other amendments that either of you feel like we need to approve? With that, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved. Second.
Moving to second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We'll move on. On our consent agenda for this month, we did, it's the season, apparently a proclamation, but you can see here that we've got five different proclamations that were done since we last met. We've had an opportunity for the Golden Deed Award winner. We were able to recognize Ms. Susan Johnson as the Golden Deed Award winner. Keep Pickens Beautiful has proclaimed Great American Cleanup. They actually did two months. They did March and April for both the cleanup of trash and then also for putting plants and edible plants throughout the community as well. The first foundation for first readers, we were able to do a proclamation on their behalf. Child Abuse Awareness Month is this month. North Georgia Mountain Crisis Network for Sexual Assault Awareness Month. And then this week is actually a very special week. This week is National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, so all our 911 dispatchers that do a phenomenal job keeping us safe, that do everything they can to keep us going. We had a proclamation for that as well. So we did have all of those to introduce into our consent agenda and make sure they're part of the official record. It's kind of an honor to get to participate in each of those. Moving on into the agenda, we have no old business to cover tonight. We do, under new business, have a handful of items we'll go through as we go through the different lists. The first is the Hazard Mitigation Grant. This is for two generators. This has been a process that's been going on for four years, working with the Georgia Emergency Management Agency. We have now received approval of that grant, where the Governor's Office has been able to approve the receipt of $136,969. Federal share of that will be $123,182.64. The state share is $5,474.78. And our local share, to be able to get two generators, is $8,212.18. So for $8,000, we'll have two all-inclusive generators, one for the recycling center and one for the Elkhorn Fire Station. So we'll be able to include both those generators. But with that, I would like to ask for a motion authorizing me as chairman to sign receipt of those grant funds.
So moved. A second.
Move in a second. Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Next item is, if I can get to the right stack of papers, an agreement for tourism development services. This is something that's been done for many years, we're just trying to get it finalized with a formal agreement with the Chamber of Commerce. As you know, we do receive hotel motel tax funds that are to be used by law for a certain purpose, for tourism, to promote tourism, and the Chamber of Commerce has been designated by DCA as the tourism arm for our county. That 6% hotel motel tax has been in place in Pickens County for many years. Out of that, a percentage of 67%, or two-thirds, is provided from the county out of the tax that's to be used for that tourism and provided to the Chamber. I know that each of you had an opportunity to have this sent over by the Court to review it prior to coming in tonight, but it's just an agreement to formalize that arrangement to where we do continue to send those funds to the Chamber to be used for tourism purposes. If you have no questions, I would like to entertain a motion authorizing me as chairman to sign the agreement with the Chamber of Commerce for tourism development services.
So moved. A second.
Move in a second. Any discussion or questions? We did have Gerard and Davis reviewed this as well, so they were able to go through and make sure to check all the final points there, but with no other comments. All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed, unless it cares. Next item is a surplus. We did replace a vehicle at Parks and Recreation. We replaced the 2004 Dodge Ram pickup truck. It was on its last legs and we were able to get that vehicle replaced last month. It was in the budget, so as we discussed in our budget hearings, we approved the funding to be able to purchase a new vehicle. But we need to vote to surplus that vehicle so it'll be available to go into the auction and be included the next time that we have an auction. So do I have a move that we approve the surplus of the Dodge Ram with the vehicle identification number that has presented in front of you?
So moved. A second.
Move in a second. Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed, unless it cares. Next item, under new business, is the City of Jasper has sent an annexation request for 490 Liberty Lane. This annexation is for a property that's actually owned by the City of Jasper, by their downtown development authority. That's where their water tower is located. They want to be able to do a little bit more work, I think, but they're going to work on expanding some that's right there. So they've sent over an annexation request that's been city property for many years. With the way that they did the annexation through 515, it creates a direct access to other properties within the city as well. So with that, do I have a move to accept their request for their annexation of this parcel of property?
So moved. A second.
Move in a second. Any discussion or questions?
Did you say it does border city property already or it does not?
So it borders the, the way that the original annexation occurred on 515 was through the annexation of 515. So at 515, it borders the property that's on 515. On either side, there's not a city property. There's two gaps between it and the next property that is off of 515, but they do have the direct access to their annexed highway property.
My only other question was, would this allow them to then leave to something else?
Yeah, it would give them, they already have that same access through 515, so it doesn't change what the, the way this one can be included doesn't change because of their original annexation of the highway.
Okay.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Motion carries. They will have a hearing at the City of Jasper on their end to finalize this on April the 23rd will be their planning commission for their public meeting and then their May 6th will be their final adoption. But part of their, their process is to show that we're not going to use that as well. All right, next on our agenda is our quarterly finance report. So I'm going to turn the floor over to Ms. Miranda. I don't have the clicker, so if you don't mind, I will serve as your clicker. So if it gets messed up, it's my fault.
I like it. Well, good afternoon. All right, so quarter one fiscal year 2024, and I guess I am going to bust this one up too. So fiscal year 23, our general fund budget as of the first quarter was $4,754,754. Fiscal year 24, quarter one, is $4,371,333. Our, this is our revenue total. Special revenue fund, which is E911, revenue is at $60,857.67. That's for the first quarter. $65,724.94 for E911 and '24, first quarter. Proprietary funds, which is our water and our airport, fiscal year 23, quarter one, And fiscal year 24, quarter one, $1,260,316.65. All right, so this is comparison of fiscal year 23 and '24, quarter one, actual to actual. Taxes, $2,023, $2,812,614. Fiscal year 24, quarter one, $2,414,444. That's a variance of $398,170, which is a decrease. In looking at that, that is motor vehicle, TAPT, decrease of 40%. Also within that is property taxes was decreased as well. Just, that was prior to, so that may mean that we received it, you know, prior to this year. All right, license and permits, fiscal year 23, quarter one, was $145,605. '24, quarter one, $185,662. That's a difference of $40,057, which was an increase. That really was substantial for the alcohol license increase across the board. Intergovernmental for '23 at quarter one was $524,614. Quarter 1 '24 was $441,082. That's a decrease of $83,532. That's really a decrease in grant activity. Charges for services for '23, quarter one, $1,117,285. Fiscal '24, quarter one, was $1,001,177,328. That's $60,043 increase. That's mainly for the ambulance fees. Finances and forfeitures, '23, quarter one, $63,827. '24, quarter one, was $43,629. Variance of $20,198, which was the overall decrease in funds. Interest income, $10,482 for fiscal year 23, quarter one. Quarter 1 '24 was $8,952. I guess that's just the difference in the balances and miscellaneous for quarter one, '23, $77,843. Fiscal '24, quarter one, $7,000, or $70,610. That's a decrease of $7,233. Decrease in that is damage to property and building rental, which is the rec center. Other finance sources, '23, quarter one, was $2,500. And then '24, quarter one, was $29,725. So that was a sale of assets. Total for, well, sorry, total for '24, quarter one, in revenue was $4,371,433. All right, so other fund revenue, quarter one, '24 versus '23. In '23, E911 was $60,857. Quarter one in '24, $65,724. That's a decrease of $4,867. Water is $796,525. Quarter one of '24 is $1,045,394. That's an increase of $248,869. That is water charges. Airports, revenue is at $195,558. Actual for '24, quarter one, is $214,922. That's $19,364.
I know you want me to click next. I'm going to speak on one, one part of that because folks are not here. On the water, we had an increase in charge from two of our sources that we purchased water from, so that increase was included into the customer base. So it's showing an increase in revenue that came in, but it's also showing an increase on the expenditures for what the water's costing as well. We didn't turn it into a profit machine.
Okay.
Sorry.
You're good. Slos 2020 receipts, quarter one, fiscal year 2024. You can see at the bottom, fiscal year '21 is $998,576. Fiscal year '22, actual, and this is all for the first quarter, $1,197,869. Fiscal year '23 is $1,267,581. Fiscal year '24 is $1,433,278. Forty, yeah, anyway. And as you can see, it's a gradual increase, pretty consistent. Countywide total government expenditures, quarter one. So the budget for fiscal year '23 was $30 million, well, $30 and a half million basically. At this time last year, the budget utilized was at 25%. Currently, this year, we're at 23% of the budget utilized. Okay, expenditures, fiscal year 2024, I'm actually just going to redo the actual and the percentage, so I won't have to bore you. Fiscal year '24, actual quarter one, for commission and general, is $739,654. That's 23% of the budget used. Elections is $142,637. That's 29%. It's election year, so just keep that in mind. Tax commissioner, $162,418. That's 19% utilization. Tax assessors, $251,084. That's 28%. Government, general government buildings is $154,174. That's 25%. Overall of the general, total general government expenditures is at 24%. We should be at 20, 24.9 or less. All right, judicial expenditures for quarter one, for Superior Court, $436,756. That's 25% of the budget. Clerk of Court, $203,78. It's 21%. District Attorney is $94,770, which is 14%. Magistrate Courts at 106, $106,053, which is 19%. Probate Courts, $142,566. That's 25%. Juvenile Court is $75,096. That's 18%. Public Defender is $146,359. That's 15%. Overall, judicial is 20%. All right, Public Safety. Sheriff's Office is at $2,291,013. That's 24%. Utilization, probation and drug abuse is $70,997. That is 19%. Fires at $1,632,962. That's 25%. Coroner's at $14,551. That's 14%. E911 transfers, we haven't made it to that point where we needed to do that transfer, but we're budgeted $992,859, zero, so obviously zero percent. Animal shelter is at $92,526. That's 21%. EMA is at $66,263, which is 49%. Overall, total public safety is at 23%. Public Works, Public Works Roads is $824,784. That's 27% of the budget. Solid waste in landfills, $213,337. That's 18%. Public education and Keep Pickens Beautiful is at $12,500. That's 100%. That's 24% overall for Public Works. Health and welfare. Health Department is at $20,723. That's 25%. Health Department Regulations at $1,008. That's 56%. And Health Department Buildings is at $211. That's 8%. Welfare is $2,413, 8%. Senior Center is $5,609. That's 23%. Transportation, which is the mat service, is $25,793. That's 18%. Overall, total health and welfare is at 20%. Culture and Recreation expenditures. Recreation Center is at $227,300. That's 26%. Swimming pools at $849. That's 2%. Program, sports is $55,080, 26%. Library is at $124,862, which is 25%. 25% total. Housing and Development expenditures. County Extension Service is at $16,591. That's 14, or 14, that's 19%. Planning and Development is at $102,323. That's 24%. Operating transfers for Airport, we're really not to that point yet. That is 0%. Total for Housing and Development is 14%. Special Fund, E911 expenditures are at $307,143. That's 14% overall. Water Department is $526,634. That's 16%. Airport is $371,603. That's 29%. Uh, 19,000, or 19% for total enterprise. And that's it. Thank you.
Any questions? She's trying to sit down really fast.
Oh, yeah. Any questions?
Kind of cornering her.
None?
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
No, I want to have a drink.
I thought she had a friend that was trying to ask you a question, but I won't open it to public comment yet.
Yeah, that's okay.
As we move on into the rest of the agenda, the action items, A, we've got to approve minutes. We can see here where we've also included the executive session that was in the amendment to the agenda. We'll do those as first, the regular meeting from March the 18th. I know that the minutes from all of these have been sent to each board member prior to arrival, so you'd have a chance to review those. If you have, then I would like to ask for a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from March the 18th, 2024.
So moved. A second.
Move in a second. Any discussion or question? All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed, unless motion carries. The second that we will go to will be the Work Session from April the 8th, 2024. Those minutes were attached by the Court to each member as well. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved. A second.
Move in a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And the last set would be the Executive Session Minutes from March the 18th, 2024. Do I have a motion to approve those?
So moved. A second.
Move in a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes are approved. We'll move on into the rezones. We have three different ones. Two of them are actually cut together, but we've, because the way they were approved in the planning commission, we'll do them as two separate rezones when they come through. The first is on six crewed properties on Carlin Road, Rezone 190627. The Planning and Development Office received the application, pulled in January the 24th, requesting a change in land use classification of suburban residential to agriculture on a combined 29.4 acre tract located on Carlin Road. The intended purpose, if approved, was to sell to an individual who wishes to build a single family home, a barn for several horses. Public hearing was held on March the 11th, in which the Planning Commission voted six yes, zero, no to approve the rezone request for the parcel. Do I have a motion from either member to follow the recommendation provided from the Planning Commission?
Motion to approve. A second.
Motion to approve with a second. Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Motion carries. All right, the second, like I said, these two really go together, but they were presented as two separate parcels. The request is from Affordable Investments LLC for a rezone 190628, a parcel of property on Highway 136 Connector. The Planning and Development Office received a completed application on January the 30th, requesting a change from rural residential to suburban residential on a one-acre tract located at 643 Highway 136 Connector in Tucker. The intended purpose of the rezone, if approved, was to confirm, to conform with current zoning, correct subject issues and create a buildable lot. The public hearing was held on March the 11th regarding this, and the Planning Commission voted six yes, zero no to approve the rezone request for parcel 018029. Do I have a motion to follow the recommendation for approval from the Planning Commission?
So moved. A second.
Move in a second. Any discussion or questions?
I wasn't really clear on why, and maybe I just couldn't catch on the video, why it does need to go to SR to make it right. I couldn't really get the way the map looks, I guess.
It's a one-acre tract of land currently on a rural residential.
But going with the other one too, that was what I didn't.
Right, the septic tank crosses the line. One of the properties, septic tank, the lines, there was an issue where the, the lines actually crossed by being able to restructure the way the lots and redraw the lots at one acre. And SR gives them the ability to obtain a building permit to build on the property. Otherwise, there's an issue, one, with having a split parcel with the septic lines split in middle, and then two, neither would be buildable because of that.
Okay.
Need to correct it to make it possible.
Okay.
Any other discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Motion carries. The second is the other half of that equation. I'll go ahead and read, that is the other parcel that sits there. It's parcel 01803003. Same was presented by the, the application was presented to the Planning and Development Office on January the 30th from Affordable Investments, requesting the same, a change, but this one was from attic to suburban residential on a one-acre portion of the track located. The intended purpose of the rezone, if approved, was to conform with current zoning, correct septic issues and create a buildable lot. During the public hearing on March the 11th, before the Planning Commission, the vote was six yes, zero no to approve the rezone request of the one-acre portion. With that, do I have a motion to follow the recommendation of the Planning Commission for approval?
So moved. A second.
Move in a second. Any discussion?
I meant to ask this too. Would you? I meant to ask this for the first one too. Are both the droppings on 136 or 136 Connector or are they going to be on our roads?
136.
They're on 136.
They're on 136.
Yeah, yeah. I looked at you, but then I remembered seeing the map at the same time, so yes. Any other discussion or question? All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is a resolution. We have had a vacant seat on the Pickens County Board of Health that followed the passing of Ms. Margie Loomin. Margie was an icon in our community that served on the Board of Health for, for a while. That, that position has stayed vacant for, for a period of time. Reached out and spoke with Ms. Jennifer Aronson, who expressed a willingness to serve in that capacity. Jenny has, has been very active with several things, including with the animal shelter and with the animal community, and the Board of Health does actually conduct the dangerous dog hearings as, as one of their functions, but also in the community as well. She met all qualifications that were there, so I would like to make a recommendation that we appoint Ms. Jenny Aronson to the Pickens County Board of Health to serve in that role with a term expiring on December the 31st, 2027. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution placing Ms. Aronson on the Board?
So moved. A second.
Move in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Very appreciative of her willingness to jump on board and serve. Next item was the recognitions. I know we did have one amendment. I know we did have one employee that is celebrating her 10-year anniversary that was to be recognized tonight. She has expressed a willingness to accept her, her award in private, not in a public meeting, but Ms. Linda Rich has been with the Recycling Center now for 10 years. She's a staple. She's the one that collects, collects your funds when you go and carries on the conversation. Does an outstanding job when the weather's nice, but when the weather's cold, she loves to tell me about how cold it is at the Recycling Center. But would love to recognize Ms. Linda for her, her service for 10 years at the, at the Recycling Center. And we will get her, her certificate and her PIN for her 10 years. She just did not have any interest in coming and being here with us. With that, that's the one recognition that I did have. I know that Ms. Easterwood had a recognition for the 911 dispatcher she was going to present tonight. She is unfortunately under the weather and not able to be here with us. I didn't know if she had designated one of y'all to do that on her behalf for.
I'll hear you.
Okay. We'll have her, her come and do that in our, in our next meeting. I know we were going to kind of coordinate that along with the 911, with the Dispatchers for Telecommunicators Appreciation Week as well. But with her not here, we'll, we'll add that in at a later time. We'll open up the floor to guest comments. Any guest comments tonight? You have a guest.
Permission, permission to speak, sir.
You can dive in with a comment.
I just want to say congratulations to Ms. Mary for winning Small Business, Chamber of Commerce, Small Business of the Month.
Thank you.
We did, did make any public comments for the board. We had an opportunity to participate in the, the issue in the state of the county at the chamber meeting this past week. I know that the City of Jasper presented, the Sheriff's Office also presented, and we had an opportunity to do that. That was the same meeting where Ms. Mary was recognized and got to get up on the stage and stand in front of the camera for the first time I've ever seen that happen.
She was very good, I think.
So it was, it was, it was quite entertaining to see her standing in front of the camera. But, and then later, the same week on Friday, had an opportunity to go up and participate in Big Canoe's Leadership Class. They do an annual leadership class and got to present a similar presentation on the state of the county, but with a few additional slides specific to, to there. And I appreciate the invite to get a chance to comment and spend some time with you guys and with the Dawson Commission chair as well.
Thanks for being there.
Thank you very much. With no other public comments, then I would like to entertain a motion that would go into executive session to discuss personnel along with property and legal issues. Do we?
So moved.
A second.
Move in a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
Motion carries. Thank you.